I kind of keep it off all the time.
As long as you play it off.
Yeah, exactly.
We've got Rich here. Whip right through this, can't we?
Let's do it.
Oh, I got several questions.
He's trouble.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Notice of an open work session in the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, November 5, 2019. Mr. Eric.
Thanks, sir. Tonight's work session is regarding the Community for All Ages effort that we're in the midst of and our work that we've been doing to try to get to the silver level for that. And Kim Nakahodo, the Assistant City Administrator, has been our point person for this effort, so I'd like to turn it over to her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, in your packet, you will find several different items of note. One of them is the North Kansas City Communities for All Ages Silver Level Activity Summary. It's kind of a one-page. It talks about the program on one side, as well as all the activities that the city hosted as part of our process. Another one is the Silver Level Executive Summary. It is a 10-page executive summary of the much larger full workbook. The much larger full workbook actually encompasses all of the communication, all of the conversations, suggestions, and thoughts that were captured during the five public meetings that the Planning Commission hosted as part of this assessment. So, kind of diving right into it, the silver level of the Communities for All Ages program is by far the most comprehensive phase. Really what staff and the Planning Commission was tasked with was working through the provided workbook, which went topic by topic, that staff had to kind of find out what the answers were, and then present them to both the Planning Commission and any stakeholders that were in attendance during each one of these sessions. So, the assessment actually began on April 4, and most of the public work sessions were conducted over the summer. And it officially concluded on October 4, when we presented the findings to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission gave some feedback. We literally went item by item, and we got conversation on, "Do you agree with this? Do you not agree with this? What would you like modified?" And then asked the Planning Commission if there was a recommendation to present this report to the City Council. So, that work was done at the Planning Commission on October 4. So, kind of talk about the process, and really, the silver level assessment is all about the process. It isn't really much about a tangible outcome, although, as you can see, there was quite a large tangible outcome in the report. It really was about the process, taking a look at yourself, taking a look at your policies, and asking, "If you were to write these policies, would you have written them the same way today as perhaps when they were developed years ago?" So, the categories that we kind of looked at through this process were Public Outdoor Spaces and Buildings, Housing and Commercial Development, Transportation/Mobility, Social Inclusion/Communication and Participation, Civic Participation and Employment, and Community and Health Services. And kind of how we did that was, we broke it down into five public sessions. As you can see, we had about one a month, and we combined two of those sessions. So, the two smaller sections, which were Section 4 and 5, which was Social Inclusion/Communication and Civic Participation and Employment, those were held together as one unit. Kind of overall, and I'm boiling down a lot of information at once, overall, the assessment showed that the city was in a fairly good position to accommodate the demographic shifts within our community. And demographic shifts, I'm meaning not just a larger base of people who are a little bit older in age, but it's also a demographic shift on different types of people, as well as people from different ethnic backgrounds. Really, Community of All Ages, it is a bit misleading, because a lot of the literature focuses on an aging demographic, but it's really a demographic that looks different than it does today, and that's across the spectrum. So, overall, kind of through this body of work, we realize that we're in a pretty good position, but just like everything, there's opportunities that present themselves to kind of become a little bit of a better community, some things that we can look at and talk about that might position us in even better position in the future. So, first of all, I'd like to say, please feel free to stop me at any point as we kind of start to walk through some of these recommendations. I'm happy to answer any questions or thought processes that go along the way to help frame what some of these reference points might be. Like I said, I included quite a bit of information in your packet. There was a lot of conversations, but really, what we're going to focus on is just the recommendations, actions, and suggestions that were brought forward through this process. Again, if you're looking for a deeper view, I'm happy to help you go there, but for, in the interest of time, I thought I'd just talk about the recommendations that were brought forward through this process. So, I'll go section by section. So, Section 1, just to kind of revisit that again, is Public Outdoor Spaces and Buildings. And I'm going to actually kind of go through, one by one, the City Council. You have the ability to either table, remove, or modify any of these recommendations. They're really meant for, this is the conversations that were brought forward by stakeholders and residents during the process, but a lot of these are policy decisions, and of course, we look to you for recommendations or the final versions of those recommendations. So, the first one is, continue to explore with the Levy District, whether the Levy could be used as an east-west connector, and that could be just a pedestrian gravel path, not a full paved path. So, what they're looking for is connectivity.
It says, "Continue to explore." Is there been exploration thus far about using that as a path, and what's gotten, have we gotten anywhere with that?
Our consultant team working on the Bicycle Master Plan has basically just been looking for information with the Levy District about what concerns they have, what would be required to do that. That's something that's been, that has been brought up. You know, when we did the master plan back in 2015, people raised that idea. So, when we say, "Continue to explore," what we're doing right now is just trying to gather more information about what they would want to see before anything would happen there, and what challenges they might know of, and doing that kind of development in that area.
If I may, I'll just say, the Levy District has been less than enthusiastic about the idea in the past, so we, that doesn't mean that we still can't have the conversations, but that's been their reaction when approached about it.
Yeah, not to get too deep into the functioning of the Levy District or any of that, but it would be a great conversation to have, you know, another time to see where we could get with that.
So, and I should have made this caveat, like upfront, because this process began back in April, some of the things that you'll find in this report have been addressed by staff, or just have been addressed in the process of due diligence by the city. So, this next one is one of them, and that's the Better Partnership with MoDOT to address connectivity, and specifically, maintenance. And as the City Council will remember, we did have a conversation about this earlier. Again, some of the timing on some of these things that we're going to bring up, conversations were already in motion to address a few of these. The Design and Build of Public Buildings to Meet the Needs of All Ages recommendation is, "City to Consider the Inclusion of Neutral Non-Binary Bathroom Facilities in Any New City Building to Demonstrate Its Desire to Be a Welcoming City." Another suggestion is to explore locating wayfinding kiosks in more heavily-used areas, such as Dag Park, where there's lots of foot traffic, including non-residents. And that's actually one of the things that we're chatting about with our wayfinding plan. So, it just so happens to be at this timing played into other conversations that were happening throughout the city. Another one would be to consider installing an information deck, an information kiosk at Mackin Park. Again, trying to hit those nodes where people naturally gather to be able to distribute information, not only about city information, but one of the things that we're working on with the North Kansas City Business Council is, where are places that people might patron that, if you're not from North Kansas City, "Hey, did you know that there are several restaurants that are just a couple blocks away?" Another one is Safety in Parks and Neighborhoods. So, to relay comments about the desire for increased lighting along the walking track, along the walking path at Mackin Park. So, one of the conversations was, is there any way to increase the wattage of the lights that are already there? So, this recommendation would be, we have not shared that with the Parks Board. We were looking to have that conversation with the City Council to guide us on those conversations.
Two things. One, I agree with that suggestion, especially on the east side. It can get very dark over there. On the information kiosk, so I'm thinking old-school paper kiosks, but are there electronic kiosks that you could update with electronic information?
So, that's actually a recommendation a little bit further on within the report, but that is, there is a cost that would be inferred from that. There are digital options. Right now, as it stands, our wayfinding sign are more of the old-school, where it would be a lockbox, and there would be a map that's updated. Again, you know, one of the projects that we're working on with the Business Council is to produce a map on a quarterly basis that updates with, as businesses kind of come and go, and that food and beverage, to make sure that information is current. Again, an electronic version would make that an instantaneous update, but there is a cost that would be associated with that. Okay?
The lighting, if that was changed or anything, would that be the park responsibility, or would the city pay for that?
That could be a negotiation. It might well be a gaming fund item that they could have that discussion with the council.
Do they pay for the electricity now on the lighting on the path at Mackin, the Parks Board?
No, I think that comes out of the general city.
Comes out of the general fund? Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any questions about Section 1?
Yes. The neutral, non-binary bathroom facilities. You have to do that to be a welcoming city. I mean, you don't take away the male and female part of it?
Correct, so...
Now, we're either male or female. In my way of thinking. Maybe surgically, you can change that, but I don't, no, I'm totally against. Mainly for the youngsters, not the adults, so it'd only be a problem. But we've had problems in bathrooms, you can ask the police, and the parks, perverts and things like that. I just, I could never agree with it.
So, the recommendation would be to model the restrooms, much like what the North Kansas City School District is doing, and that's more of a family-style bathroom, where it's a single facility with a lock on it, so it wouldn't be where you have multiple restrooms in one facility. It would turn it more into individual stalls with a lock and key, much like a family restroom in an airport.
I've seen those, actually, in North Kansas City schools, and I had really never seen anything like them, and the shared areas are, like, the sink areas are shared, and my daughter's been there for several years, and it's been great, actually. I think she likes them better than regular bathrooms, so I just had never been exposed to that before, but they, they're much different than what you would expect a bathroom to look like, and it looks, it looks good, and I think it's functional.
But you say there's a lock on the stalls, but not the room itself, right?
Yeah, the room's actually open, so in the Sage Center, where my daughter goes, the room's actually, where you walk in, where the sinks are, it's right there, so it's actually, there's no door at all into that room, and so you can either go this way or this way, and when you go around those corners, each, there's each individual stalls, and it has a vacant, you know, red, green, you know, vacant occupied thing on it. So, you go in, you do that, you come out, you wash your hands in a more public setting. I've seen them in restaurants as well, where they're just a little more functional, and it just, I don't know, just takes the issue away, all right? So, you just have a bathroom that's functional for everyone. I'm sure we can get a tour of that, if that's helpful. Sure, if we can arrange that.
Of course, I don't look for any new city buildings either, so it may not come up.
Yeah, this was a new, this was a building that was built, and when it was built, it was built with this structure in it for the bathroom, so that's why I got familiar with it.
A question, if I may, Kim, just for you. So, I do note that the wording is, "City considers the inclusion," so in other words, in adopting, if this were included and eventually adopted, City Council adopted planning, it wouldn't obligate the city. That's correct?
Correct, yeah. It's just to make it a mindful thought during that process.
Yeah, so maybe if we ever were building a new building, we can consider it or talk about it, I guess.
Continuing on to Section 1, one of the recommendations was to consider additional benches along Diamond Parkway. That area is still under construction, but upon completion would be to add some places to sit along that path. Also, to relay comments about the desire to add more seating to Dag Park, specifically around the Splash Park. That was an area during a couple of conversations, those current seating areas are highly desired, and the thought would be to add additional seating, or to ask Parks and Recreation if they would consider adding more seating.
Part of what I've seen at the Splash Park as well is that people will drop all their stuff on a table and then go with their kids to the area, so that that table is then claimed. Potentially, we could add, you know, either lockers or cubbies for the stuff, so that they don't end up taking up a table, and those can be open, but I do agree that we could use more seating as well.
Another item that kind of came up as part of the process was determine the need and feasibility of adding more handicap parking spots at the YMCA. This was something that Tina Weaver had brought up. It's something that they are looking at, is, do they have enough handicap-accessible parking spots for their clientele? This would be something that we would ask Tina or the YMCA to bring forward as a recommendation from the city, but this was a topic of conversation that did come up during the process.
Can't they just make some of their current spots handicap-accessible, or?
Because it is a city, it is a city asset.
Yes, got it.
They would need to secure...
It's not my first day here. You'd think I'd know that.
This addresses near-public facilities, but what about, like, our downtown streets along Armor Road, where we're short still on ADA spaces?
We intend to address that during the Downtown Streetscape project.
Okay, thank you.
Another item that kind of came up, and you'll see some italic on here, again, as these recommendations came up, we as staff kind of tried to dig into a few of these. So, one of the recommendations was to explore the ability to regulate smoking on public sidewalks, on major walkways, specifically in districts within the city. This was really come up, the conversation was, could there be something to address smoking in the downtown corridor? As staff kind of dug into this with the City Council and the Police Department, there are several legal and law enforcement issues that would come about with trying to implement something like this. So, though it shows up in the formal report, it's a bit more of a complicated story. Specifically, what we were kind of told was, you could maybe regulate it on the sidewalk, but then they just step off onto the, onto the street. So, although, I mean, it's something that we can continue to look into, but there is significant enforcement issues that come along with this thought. So, another one is to explore digital kiosks. Here's kind of where your thought process came in, as an alternative or supplement to printed materials. And again, there is a fiscal note that would come with this particular recommendation.
On the recommendation for the smoking enforcement, is there anybody tasked with enforcing the non-smoking in the parks? Because there's quite a bit of that going on. It's, my wife's kind of taking it on herself to fuss at people when they're smoking in Mackin Park, but I didn't know if there was any, anything that can be done.
If park staff sees that, they will often say something to people, "Hey, we don't allow smoking here in the park." That's about the extent of it. Certainly, Police Department doesn't get involved.
Right, yeah. I mean, is it every, everybody on the park staff, like, if they're mowing the grass, they might say something, or is it just?
I hope so.
Maybe we could just...
I know in, I know in Dag Park, that's been, you know, but in the larger parks such as Mackin, it's probably more difficult.
I mean, it's posted at most gates, but people choose not to see.
It was kind of my understanding that the city has never prevented, permitted, I mean, prohibited smoking in the parks. It's been never...
It's not allowed in Dag. That I know.
It says on the signs into Mackin, "No Smoking," like, big "No Smoking" signs on the gates.
But enforceability is, realistically, it's not, not an easy thing to do.
So, moving on to Section 2, some of the conversation came up with a recommendation to develop strategies to retain older duplexes and apartments, to help keep housing costs affordable, and to provide a broader range of cost points for housing options. As you know, as part of your strategic plan, this is, this perfectly aligns with some of the work that the City Council has prioritized. So, this is something that we are looking into and trying to find best-practice strategies throughout the region to address. An action is that the city staff will provide regular updates to the Planning Commission on the National League of Cities and First Suburbs Coalition Affordable Housing Pilot Program. I had hoped that this report had been issued before today, but it has hit a bit of a snag. As you know, the Kansas City, Missouri region was the pilot program, so we were part of that. We were part of the Steering Committee, as well as the summit. I had hoped to be able to say, "And here's the report," but that it has not been issued yet, so as soon as it is issued, that's something that we will be distributing. Another recommendation is to provide information in the NKC Newsletter about partners who may assist in building accessible ramps. Consider multiple communication tools to communicate resources, including convening neighborhood meetings or neighborhood associations to reach residents that do not read the newsletter and/or have limited English proficiency. So, this is something that we are actually working actively with the YMCA, who is a New America Welcome Center, to try to make sure that if city information is out there, that perhaps if a resident does not have English as a first language, that they can reach out to either city staff or trusted advisor to get that information. The action is, to participants during these sessions had asked about what is universal design, defining those terms, building it into the bones or framework of a home structure. This is something that Mid-Americo Regional Council is going to provide to city staff for inclusion within our newsletter, so that's kind of an action step that's going to move forward. And really, what that is, is, hey, if you are renovating your bathroom, and you are ripping out that tile wall, did you know that if you put in the bones so that later in life, when you need a grab bar, you don't have to rip up your bathroom all over again? You have put that, that 2-by-6 or that 2-by-8 within the bones of your, of your home, so that when you need that grab bar, all you have to do is attach it, and it has this support structure. It's something that you did when you were perhaps a younger version of yourself 20 years ago, 15 years ago, and then when you need it, all you have to do, it's a very low-cost, the wall is open, you're already installing that, that support structure for later in life. So, those are kind of some of the things, I hate to say it's more home improvement notes, but you wouldn't really think about it, perhaps when you're in a certain stage in life and you're re-tiling your bathroom. It's kind of a future investment in your home, so that later, as you age, you're able to age in place.
Good example. On that first bullet point, those look like two separate things. So, provide information in the newsletter about partners who may provide assistance to building accessible ramps, and then we talk about the communication opportunities.
Yeah, what, they had kind of...
Are those related, or?
They are related, so it's, it's communication, effective communication, making sure that not only are we communicating that, but we're doing it in a way that's mindful for multiple users. One of the things that they had talked about was, one of the other communities in the Mark Region, specifically Raymore, they're doing actually a showhouse. You know, we don't have the capacity to have a developer come in and build a showhouse, but to actually show, here's what that board would look like. So, there are multiple conversations within these. Again, it's hard to tease out what the recommendation is as a solo thing, but they really felt like that should be capsulated together. Research programs that encourage stronger partnership between cities and landlords to enhance property maintenance. Can the city do more to work with landlords? And this is kind of building off of the landlord program. Again, just encouraging the city to strengthen those relationships with landlords. What can we do to help support connecting residents and landlords together? As well as, explore whether the Police Department is involved with the Metro Elder Abuse Task Force, and you'll see a kind of, a few of these along the way. There's also a recommendation for, to chat with the Library Board to see if they have participated in any of the education to identify elder abuse. Again, just trying to make sure that any public service that the city has, that we can identify elder abuse, that we've been trained to look for those signs. Number three is transportation, towards zero deaths. This is a national program that you restructure roads and you restructure walkways to make sure that you are taking out conflict points. So, one of the suggestions was to work toward a level of ridership that will justify a max bus line. As you know, Ride KC is doing their North Oak Transit Line, so this conversation was held at the same time, so just making sure that we're doing whatever we need to facilitate should that, should that max bus line come through North Kansas City, making sure we're working toward those goals. Improve the crosswalk at Fayette and improve access to north side of Armor, to provide access to Sterner and North Kansas City Hospital, to work with MoDOT to improve the pedestrian experience of Armor Road Route 10 under the I-35 Bridge. This was an area that came up during these conversations. It is not well-lit underneath that bridge, and it does have some debris that is underneath there, some road debris, so kind of working through that path to make it a pleasant experience to encourage pedestrian connectivity from the One North Redevelopment Area to, to other areas of town that are both on bike and pedestrian.
And obviously, it says, "Work with MoDOT." Like, what is our, like, where does our ability to make any changes stop on both sides?
Well, the, the line between city right-of-way and MoDOT right-of-way is basically at Ozark. East of that, we, we can propose changes to MoDOT if we are willing to pay for them. They review plans and issue permits, or say, "No, we're not willing to issue you a permit for these improvements." So, anything on the east side of Ozark is a partnership with MoDOT, and they would have to sign off on it.
Because one of the questions I keep getting is, like, will this complete street eventually extend to get east of 35? I don't even know if that's even in the discussions with MoDOT to...
We've had no discussions with MoDOT about it.
So, to add to this, the towards-zero deaths bullets, so I think on the north side of the city, when we're talking about the gardens and some of our houses up there, I think we need to also work on the walkability of, across to the bus stops. I think that we have this in the Burlington Corridor Plan, or at least discussions about it, but I'd like to make sure it's called out here, because we have a population there that if they try to get across that street, it's like playing Frogger to get to the bus stop, if they needed to take the bus. And also across Burlington to the bus stop. Not the, not the minibus, but the major. The real bus, yes, the real bus. The what? Fixed route. Fixed route. Not the Metro Flex, using the right words.
I can add that, thank you. One of the suggestions is to include Clay County Senior Services in discussions with nonprofit rideshare providers. As you've kind of mentioned, the Metro Flex system, it's just complementing our microtransit options with the assets and the programming that Clay County Senior Services has available to them. So, it's just, when you're mentioning one, try to make sure you're mentioning all, all microtransit offerings to residents. One of the other actions was to add a link to the Older Driver Safety content. This has been done, so we actually, this sounded like a great thing. It's a very low bar, you know, it didn't take us much time to implement this recommendation, so staff, we've already added this, along with a couple of other resources, onto the city's website. So, submitted application for designation as a walk-friendly community in 2015, and staff will review and assess any changes that might lead to a resubmission. So, this was something that the committee asked us, just to make sure that we're mindful that, that the group that was... the committee asked us just to make sure that we're mindful, that, that the group that was present that evening felt like we should keep this on our radar. So, that was the action, was keep a note on this, resubmit if, if it, if you feel like the city is in a good position toward this designation. Section four actually had no suggestions whatsoever.
Really? What was that last, what was it called?
Inclusion.
Social inclusion, communication, and participation. Okay.
So, moving on to section five, um, explore the inclusion of youth on city commissions and/or committees. This was kind of a larger topic point of how do you make young people civically engaged? Well, you kind of widen the table and you invite them to participate.
That's one I'd like to maybe seek, reconsidered some in that, look at considering a youth council. Instead of just putting them on commissions, maybe have a, you know, a board where they can get together first, and then maybe split off as well and be on committees.
Yeah, I think there's pros and cons either way.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to probably see the options laid out. Of course, a lot of that, I mean, would have to do with staff too, and how they could work that in. So, that's why I'd at least like to see the options for youth council.
Another suggestion was to explore the possibility of inviting residents to volunteer on a city-organized cleanup day in public spaces. Um, we're a little bit more reactionary in this node, and the suggestion was that the city kind of lead this event as opposed to being reactionary. We do have several, um, organizations that do contact, specifically Parks and Recreation, that are looking for volunteer opportunities, but the suggestion was kind of flip that model on its head and for the city to actually coordinate a cleanup day.
I feel like there's some opportunity there for, to engage people with the Parks and Rec Department for volunteering as well. Uh, has there been any discussions to see if maybe they would be open to having people help that aren't necessarily their board or their staff? I mean, I feel like they, they hold a lot of events and always generally seem to need help.
Are you talking about like for a cleanup day?
Or even if, even if, even if like the Halloween event, whatever that, I mean.
Oh, bring in volunteers to help.
Yeah, so like you always see Zach out there helping a lot of those, but, you know, maybe you get some other residents that have the time and would like to help.
I know they have companies that come in and do like a cleanup day or something, or work on the park, but maybe even at events. I know we were talking to some corporate partners when we did the tour at Cerner, and they're always needing, you know, community hours or community volunteering, so get those people involved.
Yeah, just, as, you know, as we talk about social inclusion, you get some of the older residents. I think there's a lot of options. I mean, because they have a lot of events. I'm sure we could, I mean, that'd be up to the Parks and Rec Board, but I'm sure there's a lot of room to.
I can add that.
Thank you.
Explore how state statutes on open meetings intersect with residents' desire to have input remotely through digital technology. So, kind of what the thought process was, as people maybe have mobility issues, they would want to participate in city council meetings or to be able to interact with the city's other boards or commissions to kind of have the technology available via Skype or FaceTime. You know, there's a lot of different technologies, but what would that look like and what are the state statutes that surround that? So, that would be kind of the recommendation is, hey, staff, dig into that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I pulled up the plan while we were going through it. Um, section four, the social inclusion communication part, um, four B, communicate, or comprehensive city communication plan that reflects diversity of age, culture, and abilities. Um, one request I've heard from the residents at the Gardens Apartments is that a lot of them don't either use email or the city website, um, and they've asked if there, somebody could maybe bring some agendas ahead of time for what would be discussed in print, um, so that they can, you know, have them at their central desk and come and grab a copy to, to find out what's going on.
And they actually have an office manager who probably could do that.
Oh, yeah.
Who is on email, who could print out copies for them.
Do they have a newsletter there at the Gardens? Then they, you can make that information available in the newsletter. Say, go to the manager's office, here's the agenda for city council, or whatever.
Word will definitely spread as soon as it gets dropped on the front desk, though.
That'd be an easy fix.
I can add that suggestion to section four. Last section. So, this is one area that kind of began in section si- six, and it kind of blossomed, it tangent off just a little bit. So, I'll kind of walk through how the conversation began. Um, adding information to the city's website about emerging services, um, that are available through the Mid-America Regional Council. They have kind of a, um, it's not a two-on-one call center, but they do have a nexus that people can call in, and if you are looking for services across the metro, they can help point you in the right, in the right area and connect you to resources. Um, so, the first ask, the first recommendation was, go ahead and include that within your materials, information on the website in any time that you're talking about city resources. At the planning commission, this kind of got broadened, and the planning commission asked that, what, to be included in here was to actually develop a resident resource magnet. And what that would be, would, it would be included, either mailed out once or included in a newsletter, you know, lots of conversation about how that would be distributed. But what it would include, would it have city contact information, utility partner contact information, and two-on-one united way. Um, that was a resource that several people on the planning commission were unaware of, that that is, if you are needing help with your utility bills, if you are needing help because you are having issues trying to source food, if you are needing a ride, two-on-one is kind of the greater Kansas City, uh, collector for that particular information.
Problem with two-on-one is you have to have a landline to dial two-on-one. You can't dial two-on-one on your cellphone. I run not-for-profit, I run into this all the time. It's not very user friendly. It's not updated very well. Um, we get calls all the time in my agency saying, oh, you, you provide this and this and this. And every time they call me, I tell them what we provide, and every time they throw in a whole bunch of things we don't provide. It's a very frustrating system to people who actually need services. Um, it's not user-friendly. People don't have landlines now. I don't know how that can be adjusted, but that is not, uh, a source. I mean, I know they, they really tout it, but it's not user-friendly. And it's not, even when they update it, they don't update it. I've been there 13 years and they've yet to update it like I ask them to every year. And it's really frustrating for people who are actually looking for services. So, maybe we can explore other options and for them to get the information that's appropriate for our, for Clay County and for North Kansas City, because there are services that are available to only these residents. Um, you know, I'd be very happy to work with people on that, but I think we need to do something that's more directed towards our residents, where they can actually access services that are available to them, given where they live or what county they live in. Otherwise, it's too broad and it's too frustrating, and I, I don't think that would be, um, very helpful.
Councilmember Pierce goes on that committee.
I already volunteered myself.
I said, we'd be happy to, you know, present that at a city council, this is what the draft would be. But kind of the thought would be something that is, um, you know, if there was a power outage, here's where that information is, should you have lost power and I don't know where my phone is. Oh, I remember there was a magnet on the fridge.
Yeah, and that's great. I mean, those things work. But I mean, when we're talking about needing help with your rent and your utilities, our food services, it needs to be more specific to the area of which they can actually access services.
And I think some of our local charities too, that I know with the Harris money, we give, uh, information, we give money, we've given money in the past to food pantries, and so maybe some of those could be included along with the senior services.
We'd have to be mindful on the length, but I think that there's something we can do. There's definitely a middle. Another recommendation was to continue and strengthen the partnership with Clay County Senior Services, and that's something that throughout this process, one of the outcomes, and I'm kind of skipping ahead a little bit, is definitely we have a better understanding of what some of our resource partners can offer our community members, that we have a better understanding than we did before we began this process. Um, and then to relay the comments about the desire for, for library staff to be trained to recognize the signs of child and elder abuse. So, that would be a recommendation to have that conversation with the library board, that hey, throughout the Communities for All Ages Silver Level Assessment, this is something that came up, and we wanted to pass that information on.
And Parks Board also.
Do you guys have any questions about anything I just covered?
I do have one on the, uh, part four, I think it was, but it's the walkability, uh, on the north side and going past the interstate. I brought up, I think, like, when was it, MoDOT resurfaced or something? Anyway, they did a poor job. If you put a sidewalk, if you make it walkable, they need to do something under the bridge that doesn't drain. It puddles. And you'll get drowned if you're walking. It's just something to bring up with them if it gets that far. If it doesn't. I, I didn't notice it on the south side, but I have on the north.
Kind of beyond the assessment, this is just a couple of things that, um, the, the committee, the planning committee had noticed, is we do have, and at the staff level, we have a increased partnership with area agencies. I kind of mentioned this before, but thanks to this process, and it really kind of is a process, I kind of mentioned that before. It's not so much about a tangible outcome as much as it is, um, about the process and the conversations that this particular program facilitates. We have a better understanding of several of the things that Clay County Senior Services can offer our residents, as well as the Y M C A, the hospital. Through this process, we have learned about programs that we at the staff level didn't, didn't have a firm understanding about. Um, as well as the city is now part of the North Kansas City Hospital Community, Community Health Needs Assessment. This is a requirement that is actually something that the hospital has to over, undergo over several years to meet their Medicare and Medicaid funding levels. Um, the city is actually on several boards now. One of them is to improve and increase the services to better meet the needs of the health of our aging Northland population subcommittee. This is a committee that will meet four times a year over the next three years to brainstorm, um, and identify gaps within our network. And if there is a service or an issue that's not being currently addressed, how could perhaps one of the partners step in, either get grant funding, or maybe modify a current, current program to be able to better address that need? So, this is something that kind of through the staging of this particular program, it has spun off into another larger program, um, a much longer program because it is a three-year process. Just real fast about, about next steps. So, part of this process was to issue this report and actually go through, line by line, through all the suggestions, recommendations, and actions with the city council. Um, again, it is a large body of work. I tried to kind of streamline it so that you didn't have to read through 78 pages of findings. Um, again, the city council, I have taken notes of all of your comments and suggestions, um, captured throughout this. Again, this is kind of a working document. It's a living, breathing item. It's not something that sits onto a shelf once this process is complete. Um, so with this issuance, should the city council ask for this to be brought forward, we have met the Silver Level Assessment requirements. Um, we, at the staff level, should this be brought forward, would, would submit the application to actually be considered for the Silver Level Assessment. Um, the coalition would meet, and that Silver Level, should the city be honored with that, would be designated in January 2020. Um, I kind of meant in the memo, kind of, I'm forwarding on to next steps here, but the Gold Level Assessment, that's something that is being applied. So, the Gold Level Assessment is to take a major plan and to apply a all-ages lens, is what they call it, and that is being done as part of the Bike Master Plan. Um, just real quick, I would like to thank the planning commission for all of their help. They're the ones who really did the yeoman's work on this particular process. Um, I would also like to thank the Mid- America Regional Council, Clay County Senior Services, North Kansas City Y M C A, um, the Health Department, Clay County Health Department, K C A T A, North Kansas City Parks and Recreation, the library, community development, city staff, and actually our former intern Bobby Tech. You may remember him. He helped quite a bit with this particular process. Um, it wouldn't have been possible without kind of a team effort. I would love if you guys have any questions, um, about this, either the process, or the findings, or the next steps. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I, I noticed one thing. I, I can't remember what city now, but it, they were over in Kansas where they had the all-ages lens applied to every item on their individual agenda. Is that something you doing at some point? Or, you know, but a lot of the items, they'd say, you know, like, this not applicable to anything within this. But then other items, you know, pick parts out and show how you're applying the age lens. And I don't know what section that would fall into on here.
On their actual meeting agendas?
Yeah, on their actual, yeah, like, so like, it'd have like their subject here, and then at the bottom it'd kind of have like a Community for All Ages blurb about. So, it, it's, it's making sure that you're just not, you know, saying all these things, but you're also applying it as well on your, on each individual item.
If that's something that this, that the council would like to have staff address?
For me, it would be more helpful just on major projects. Um, but I don't know, maybe I'm missing something, but I think for, if we're looking at our major projects and looking at it in terms of, does it apply to, to everyone?
So, I mean, like, a lot of them, they did have like that, like, could be this renovation that doesn't apply to this, so that's an easy move on to the next one. And it kind of points out which ones do actually have a little bit more. I don't know. Just something I noticed that's still out there.
I really liked the two-pager. Uh, I thought maybe we could use that for other things, um, like Armor Road redevelopment, or Burlington Cor- you know, things, major projects that we have, this two-pager that actually lists out, like, here are the public meetings that we've had, here's the process, here's the end results or future steps. I wonder if that might be a helpful communication tool for the community. I liked your whole packet here, actually. Seventy-seven pages, so I'm not going to recommend that, but I thought it was very helpful.
Yeah, and again, that could be used at the Gardens. It could be distributed at the Y M C A. You know, places where people who are telling us in our community, we don't, we don't do email, we don't do this, we, you know, we don't go to the city website. There's a lot of opportunities between the Y M C A and the library to disseminate information to people who don't get in in the way some of us get it. Um, and I like that idea of the two-pager in regard to that, too.
One more. We previously discussed working with NNI. Wasn't that, was that a process, or is that a separate?
That is something that, it's, it's separate, but it does show up in this as, you know, working with community partners to make sure that your aging housing stock, you know, what community assets, what community resources could we address people to for grant opportunities, for wheelchair ramps, anything that they might need within their home.
And that's still an ongoing process, right? All right, thank you.
So, at this point, I am kind of looking for some city council direction. Would you like to see, with the, the recommendations and conversations that we had tonight, um, I can incorporate that, would you like to see this come forward for formal adoption, or would you?
So, you'd do that by, say, a resolution on a council agenda?
Yes.
I'd say we move ahead.
I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Move the jury?
Second.
All in favor?
It was quiet, but I heard it.